United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, October fifth, twenty twenty. Time being seven P. M. Meeting of the Greensboro City Council is called to order at this time for the silence of your electronic devices. To comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, the city requests that participants in this meeting complete a voluntary anonymous survey that is available on the table in the back of your room. Brenda is not able to be with us this evening, so Betsy Riley will be filling in for her for deputy. Betsy, if you could please call her on.
Jamie Kane?
Here.
By Adam McKinsey here. I'm Cleveland.
Here.
Or you have Swaller?
Here.
Darrell Pollard.
Under the wire.
You should have all received a copy of the September eighth, twenty twenty minutes in your trunk. Any additions, corrections to those?
There's a correction on page four, under ordinance twenty twenty, twenty-one, utility salary. It's got Jamie, made the motion on Jamie second. I think that should be Kevin second.
Kevin second.
I was an overachiever, Rick.
Huh?
Overachiever.
Sounds like you're my homework.
Any other additions or corrections? If not, take a motion to approve those as presented, put the addition.
So moved.
Moved by Kevin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie, all those in favor, say five a second, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we will move into bold business. Brenda, not being here, I think we can go through these fairly quickly. These are the budget ordinances that we had talked about. Twenty twenty dash fifteen was the commending of salaries ordinance, section one and two for the additional pay period into this year. Any further discussion on those? If not, we'll take a motion to approve twenty twenty dash fifteen on second final reading.
So moved, second.
Moved by Jamie, seconded by Darrell, all those in favor, say five a second, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Twenty twenty dash sixteen is the utility salary section, same thing. Is there a motion to approve twenty twenty dash sixteen on second final reading?
Second.
Moved by Jamie, seconded by Rick, all those in favor, say five a second, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, ordinance twenty twenty dash seventeen is an additional appropriation to fund those additional payments. Is there a motion to approve twenty twenty dash seventeen?
So moved, second.
Moved by Kevin, seconded by Jamie, all those in favor, say five a second, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, up next we have City Engineer Ron May for discussion of twenty twenty dash twenty four, first, Brant Street, Fourteenth Street, property restrictions.
Per Jamie's request last month, we sent letters to all of the property owners on Fourteenth Street and Brant Street from fourteenth to fifteenth, as well as any residents where in the period was rented properly. You have been provided copies of the responses we got, they were two or three, if those need to be read into the record.
I don't think so. If you want to read them in the record, you can. It doesn't hurt anything, go ahead, read them in the record. Did he summarize that? I don't think he can summarize, I think he has to say, I got some, and this gentleman like I said this time.
I don't think we need to read it into the record.
Everybody's got a copy of it, maybe you can provide a copy of somebody who requested it. The general consensus was, we received some letters, the input was?
Input in general was that they're appreciative that the city's investigating the situation. Generally, they were okay with the idea of having, we're on Fourteenth Street, right? Having parking prohibited on both sides. One of the responses, they kind of requested a different methodology that I don't think we're capable of doing. They wanted to put up to separate Fourteenth Street from property to the south. In its world where it's a public street, public's entitled to do whatever you all permit. So if you prevent parking, the public is entitled to park there. And if you prohibit or restrict parking, then that's applicable to everybody here.
Do you have some folks in the audience who have submitted cards, but do you want to be sure? Engineer May answer any of the questions you guys have first.
Alex Tony three.
Okay, Mr. Miller, you've written Gaston on me, is that what you're concerned about? Are you concerned about Fourteenth Street?
Well, all of them, because I.
Okay, please step forward and state your name, I'm in the mic, give you a couple minutes if you want.
Todd Miller. My, I work for the street department, and it is rough some days to get my truck in and out of there for picking up trash. Also, the plowing of the snow is very difficult because you've got two choices, push it on the cars or push it away. If I push it away, then that's all in the driveways, if the parking is limited to one side. I don't wish to have parking on either side of the road, on all the streets. But you guys, you know, you have to do what you have to, but I'm just here to oppose any parking on the street. The other morning, I tried to get to work, I had to maneuver around cars to just barely get my pickup truck through. Those vehicles was there overnight, windows doed over. If an ambulance would have had to come to my house in the middle of the night, they wouldn't have got through at all, because I just barely got my pickup truck through. So it's just very rough to operate there. Even if you put the parking on one side of Gaston, like you have proposed, there's a lot of rental property on that. So they have a lot of deliveries, they have a lot of moving in and out, they have all that. So if there's a moving truck that has to unload, and there's cars over here, there's no getting in or out. There's a lot, lot of deliveries on that road, same thing, you can't get around if there's any cars on the street, so.
Worth pointing out, you also live on Gaston.
I also own two pieces of property on Gaston, so.
On Gaston?
Yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Thank you for the phone work at the street department, do while you're here. Up next, I believe Jesse Filler was next on the card, they made it into your mindset, but do you say your name? Ask him, please.
My name's Jesse Filler, I live at twenty-one eleven North Brant Street, so right on that corner of Fourteenth and Brant. I think it'd be a great idea to really bring the all parking down Fourteenth Street, it's really hard if you're coming around that curve there to get through because of all the parking that's over there, especially if there's another car coming. I don't know how many times I have to pull over to the side of the road to let a car come by because there's so many cars parked down Fourteenth Street. Now that they've got all the houses built on Fourteenth Street as well, I'm sure that the people that live on Fourteenth are having a hard time backing out of their driveway with all the cars that are parked behind. I guess it's the south side or north side?
North side.
Yeah, so all the apartments. And not to mention, there's a couple of people that live in those apartments that park on Fourteenth Street that are very obnoxious, and there's one in particular that'll rev his engine up all hours of the day. Very, very annoying, I've got a newborn, and he's woken and loved many times, just sitting there revs his engine up. So I think prohibiting any kind of parking on Fourteenth Street, great idea.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Miranda? Is it passed over?
Casares, you're close.
Okay, if you don't mind, state your name and or address.
Um, C.A.S.A.R.E.Z.
My name is Miranda Casares, I live on eight twenty-nine West Fifteenth Street, which is on the corner of Fifteenth and Brant. And much like what Jesse said, I agree wholeheartedly with the no parking on Fourteenth Street. Quite frankly, I don't know how the school bus gets through there, I don't know how the street department gets through, how anyone gets through, it's very obnoxious, like you said. You have a few people who, of course, like you mentioned, rev up their engine at all hours of the night. Just, I just think it's more of a nuisance than anything. I could not imagine, like, a lot of work for this, seeing how they get through.
Thank you. Any questions for our participants this evening? Anything further for Mr. May?
I'm just, I'm just concerned with, I mean, what if you're, what do you do if you're, you have a company? Where do they park? In the yard?
That is, if there's somebody that just stops to visit or to unload something, that's normally not the problem, we deal with that all over the streets, all over town.
Right.
It's the, it's, it's the, if there's any parking allowed, it stays parked, it stays, nothing moves, so that makes a continuous block. At least if somebody's visiting, you have means or time to wait and do what, you know, to maneuver around, but if it's constant parking, they will be constant parking there, and that's, that's the biggest issue. It ain't somebody visiting, I mean, you can't really control that much.
I think perhaps the rest of the answer to that question, we did notify, as best we could, everybody on that block, of course, we have a lot of block, Brant, and the only, there were no responses that expressed concern about that. I think probably saw a lot of responses, so people had a good opportunity.
So the ordinance that's in front of you is a restriction on both sides of that one. Any further comments, questions, concerns? Make the motion, we approve twenty twenty dash twenty-four, on the second reading. Second. Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Darrell, all those in favor, say five a second, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we'll move on to twenty twenty dash twenty-five, similar on Gaston Drive, with the exception of we prohibited parking on the south side of Gaston.
The ordinance that was presented to you last month started out with prohibiting parking on both sides, and in your meeting, and after discussion, you decided to consider only prohibiting parking on the south side, allowing parking on the north side. But again, as Jamie had requested, we sent letter to all of the property owners and board of residents on Gaston Drive, the area to be affected, we had maybe four responses, or I had maybe four responses, and I'm sure you all have had some conversations as well. The responses that I received were all in favor of doing something about parking, and the prevalent response was it needs to be removed from both sides.
I guess I'll make the motion to approve twenty twenty dash twenty-five with the amendment that we amended to restrict parking on both sides. Motion's been made to amend twenty twenty dash twenty-five to both sides, is our second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Rick, all those in favor, say five a second, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, Street Commissioner Fosch Camper will start installing signs sometime when we get those ordered and in stock, and we will ask the police, we'll ask the police department to help us with some enforcement activity out there over the coming weeks, including educational campaign, I'm sure, and we'll get that straightened up. The three of you that joined us, thank you very much for being here, feel free to stay for the rest of the meeting, or if you'd like to leave, tomorrow, welcome, I know it's always awkward, we've been filled with people. Up next, we have ordinance twenty twenty dash eighteen, that's the twenty twenty-one elected salaries ordinance, second final reading. Any further comments on that? Make the motion, we approve on second reading. Motion's been made by Jamie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Darrell, all those in favor, say five a second, aye? Those opposed? Okay, up next we have twenty twenty dash nineteen, which is the twenty-one city employee salary ordinance. Is there a motion to approve on second final reading?
Moved.
Moved by Darrell, seconded by Jamie, all those in favor, say five a second, aye? Those opposed? Ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-one is the utility salary ordinance, is there a motion to approve on second final reading?
Moved.
Moved by Jamie, for second?
Second.
Seconded by Ed, all those in favor, say five a second, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, twenty twenty dash twenty-two is the city of Greensburg's twenty twenty-one budget. Is there a motion to approve on second final reading? Moved by Jamie, seconded by Darrell, all those in favor, say five a second, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that brings us to twenty twenty dash twenty-three, we do have Superintendent Tom Hunter here from Greensburg Community Schools for their twenty twenty-one budget, if you have any questions for him, you have reviewed it one time. Any questions for Superintendent Hunter? If not, take a motion to approve twenty twenty dash twenty-three.
Second.
Moved by Ed, seconded by Darrell, all those in favor, say five a second, aye? Those opposed? Okay, that will bring us to new business, Police Chief Randy Bridges and Fire Chief Nathan Stern will sort of give some joint presentation on their proposed wellness policy for the citizens of the city this evening as well. Gentlemen, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start just briefly, the police department currently does not have anything on paper as far as physical agility test, or any type of assessment, the fire department has that on their files, so we're trying to keep up and catch up with them as far as the physical standards and that. The second piece that the fire chief and I talked about was the wellness program that I would like to introduce as far as the mental health for public safety. This is something that I've been working on for a while. I began working with this, the chief at Frankfurt Kentucky Police Department, he is considered to have probably one of the top programs as far as mental health for officers in the nation, so that's who I've been speaking with, and a lot of my stuff is geared towards that. As many of you know, back in twenty thirteen, we had an officer take his life on duty. So my biggest thing is I want to make sure that my officers are able to have contact with someone to speak with on any type of situation they may face on duty or off duty. My proposal is to have the fit for duty program, which will begin January one of twenty twenty-one, and that will allow the officers to sign up if they're interested in participating in the fit for duty program. To be in this program, you have to score at least a hundred points before you actually reach the possible incentive that passed. That will go for passing a fit for duty, which is a physical agility test, which I provided everybody with about a month ago. That will be done in full uniform, and the agility test will be based on scenarios to where we would possibly be on duty, so instead of doing push-ups and sit-ups, we're actually going to be doing dummy drag, stuff like that, to where it's actually more incorporated with the job, and that due to pass lawsuits on the other type of testing and that. If the officer decides to want to speak with someone, a counselor or psychologist, I kind of made it to where the blame can kind of be pushed on me. A lot of times, we all know that we don't want to maybe face the facts of having to go and talk to somebody, so if the officers do go and speak with someone at least once a year, they will receive so many points, it'll go towards a fit for duty. I've also proposed, which there is money in the twenty twenty-one budget, to where the police department would pay for the first meet, or first session with therapists, and anything after that would go on the employees. We are looking currently at two or three different therapists, which will be hopefully considered in network, Fire Chief and I spoke briefly about that, that way the cost is not too bad for the officers. And again, we're only, I'm only requiring them, if they're wanting to be in this program, to go once a year, anything after that, that would be on them. So again, it's going to allow the officers to say that, I don't really want to go do this, but to get my incentive, I'm going to go and talk to somebody, so it kind of gets them that foot in the door, and they can put that blame on me and that. So Board of Works tabled the policy procedures until the next meeting. Here in a second, I will let the fire chief speak on the mental health part, he's a lot more knowledgeable on that than I am. I am not asking for any monies in twenty twenty-one, the program will start in twenty twenty-one, and if the officers meet the hundred points that they required, then hopefully next year, we can begin working with the council for the twenty twenty-two budget, to where police and fire, you know, again, if they meet these standards, they would receive a six hundred dollar stipend, which would be half of the insurance cost, and we had talked about possibly using public safety money, but again, it's something that we need to start working with the budget for twenty twenty-two, out of our own line items, it's definitely something that I think we can definitely do. Like I said, I really hope that this gets passed, again, I think it will do our public safety a lot of good in the future, hopefully it opens up for any city employee to go get help with them if needed. Earlier this year, they passed a law in Indiana to where you are sent back up, or if you are sent to perf for a psychological evaluation, and if you fail, you'll have to go in front of a board, and that can take up to a year or two, to see if that firefighter or police officer is mentally fit for duty. My big thing is, is I don't ever want to get to that point, I want to be able to hit it home and get these guys and our guys in the right frame of mind before we ever have to send somebody that far up, so again, I'm one to be proactive and again, bring that here at home. As far as in the state of Indiana, I do not know of any other law enforcement or fire departments that currently run a both physical and mental health, there may be, but I think this is one thing for the city of Greensburg, if we do pass it, we could easily beat a cow's head in the state of Indiana and kind of just do that, first put the door to where other departments can also hopefully get this for their guys. So I will now turn it over to the fire chief and let him speak a little further. So the fire department, we have very similar programs, we get to very different in the fact of, we're both public safety, we both have the high adrenaline, the basically the hours of maybe sheer boredom by short minutes of sheer panic, which causes a mental strain on us and adrenaline dump and things like that, physiological changes to the body, lack of sleep, fatigue, things like that. So it's very important that we include our mental health with our physical health. We have a policy at the fire department which is also attached, it needs to be grammatically cleaned up a little bit, but again, it is currently in draft form as we work through this. We have a level system at the fire department that is level one through five, those that score level one and two have to go through more physical fitness training, and ultimately can be taken off the fire truck if they do not pass that, and then if they continue not to succeed, then progressive discipline will happen, and they will actually be suspended from the department until we can get them to where they need to be. For those that are overachievers and excel in level fours and fives in physical fitness, as well as everything else, they would be the only ones that would actually receive the stipend starting in twenty twenty-two, and that would only make up roughly about four to five members of our department of thirty. Everybody else is right there in those level threes, which is where we want them to be. We started this program, it's basically three months after I came on, we've already actually seen a drastic improvement, we've had one individual through a modified duty program, and then the others have actually taken it upon themselves to get better. We work with a social worker out of Indianapolis who specializes in first responders, and I'm currently working with Donna Associates now to try to get her into our network. We brought her in, and the department paid for her to give basically an overall speech. As Chief Bridges say, I study and have written extensively about firefighter mental health, I'm a suicide attempt survivor myself, so I can do so of this, but it's better coming from somebody from the outside than the guy's boss. So I have been able to help a couple individuals one-on-one, notice some signs of burnout or what we call compassion fatigue, and other coping, unhealthy coping mechanisms that guys seem to be using, we're starting to address that, and I'm able to do that myself because of the knowledge and training that I have personally, so it does help with that, but again, there's some times where we want to bring in people from the outside to kind of hammer that point home, and we would share these resources between police and fire, because while the job we do is somewhat different, the treatment modalities and the things that need to be talked about are the same. And it's not only just what we see at work, it's what we see at home too, because nobody can separate work and home a hundred percent. To do that is almost impossible, especially with the fire department working twenty-four hour shifts, they gain a second family, but they're also away from their other family, as well as law enforcement officers, and in today's climate, sometimes you don't know if you're going to be coming home or not. So there's a lot of, a lot of mental strain going on currently on top of the pandemic itself, that we really need to be watching out for these guys, and for them to, for us to help break the stigma of talking to somebody, whether it's just saying, hey, I feel okay, or just I had a couple of bad days, or there's an acute problem, you know, monetary incentives sometimes will help drive that. Is that the answer? Probably not, but we have a very tough stigma, especially with hard-headed males and females in a very type A personality-driven profession, that anything we can do to help incentivize getting them help, we need to. Sometimes it's just that initial push that we need. Once they get in there and they get feeling better, and they see that talking about their feelings and sharing some of that is a good thing, then they will spread the word, and then that will help. But we would like to begin work now for the twenty twenty-two budget to make sure that we are able to fund this somehow and have the support of both the Board of Works and the Greensburg City Council to move forward with our physical health and wellness programs, and again, looking at not only just the body, but the mind as well, and bringing in nutritionists, bringing in the whole, kind of the whole mind, body, and soul type of picture, to make sure that we have healthy firemen and healthy law enforcement officers, because we don't want to repeat what happened in twenty thirteen, nor do we want to lose any of our city employees, but most, we don't want to lose a fireman or a policeman to some type of cardiac disease or some type of medical problem that we could have caught earlier on with these screenings that we do.
Will entertain any questions?
Yes, for the most part, this program is a policy which comes from Board of Works, does have a financial impact, but not until potentially twenty twenty-two correct, and we should know how that's going to come about, you know, towards the end of the year, we should know how many of these officers, kind of firing, letting them reach the level that requires that. But it's a, like you said, it's kind of a first in the state type program, but it's always good to have your guys to say, look, some questions?
I know, I think, just, I won't speak for everybody on Board of Works, but I believe there was a unanimous kind of support for a program like this, I think some of the things we asked for was to go back and clean these policies up a little bit from a wording standpoint, and then I guess the other thing, I don't know if we mentioned in the Board of Work, but what I, I guess I'd like to see is a little more detail on how do they get the points, where the point structure comes in at, or what they have to pass, and you know, to get, what's a level one, what's a level two, three, four, five, right? What are those levels, and if we could input those into these policies?
We can, some of it's going to have to be just sit down and explaining, just because it's very kind of technical in nature, so it's hard to write it all out, otherwise we have a twenty-page document, but we can provide the guidance and what's being used and how that is, and I think with some explanation.
People are going to, they're going to hold it accountable, and so if we don't have it right.
For sure. I just, it's also, just so you know, it is going to be very, you know, we will explain that as long as it takes.
And maybe it's, maybe that portion's an attachment, that way you can update that easier versus the whole policy, and you know, you can, so it's an attachment to the policy, and here's what we're referencing, because maybe you have to make adjustments to it, but I think it's, I know it might be a little painful, but I think it's worth doing it because if you're telling me my pay is based on it, or I might potentially get suspended because I'm not fit for duty, I think it's important that it's spelled out, here's the expectation, if you're looking at it right, and who knows? See if you have a point of contention.
And one other thing that we're looking to add to the policy, which was not brought up yet, is currently the fire department is sending two officers through training for nutrition, physical fitness, and then I'm sending two officers through, it's called Cooper Institute, which they will become certified nutritionists and also physical fitness instructors. So we have Jim on site at PD, that's all been remodeled the past two years, so our officers will have that close knit on getting extra training and extra plans if necessary. And those items came out of our emergency line item budget this year to hopefully keep a lot of this stuff in-house, so we, you know, the mental health services will have to farm out, but you know, what costs we can keep down by training our own guys, and then our individuals will have access to them twenty-four seven, basically they have their own personal trainer, free of charge.
Being in public service along the by-hand, this is a great, great program.
Thank you.
I think you need it. On your draft, I went through, and I only saw two things I would change, a couple places that should, I would put the shaft.
Todd, make a fire chief.
Fire chief. Whenever on your draft, taking the manual, damn, I said you should.
Yeah, some of that.
It should be shaft.
Correct.
Or you're going to get somebody.
Right.
They said I should.
Oh yeah, somebody, somebody pushing issue, oh yeah, like Jamie said, so.
No, other than, I think it's a great program, that's a chance a lot of that, much of the team.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, no action is required unless you have money to waste or something, you're welcome to, we'll be right along. Okay, Bernard?
Just real quick, I was, I was looking through, I passed out a community
Just real quick, I was, I was looking through, I passed out a community survey, which goes along with a strategic plan that I passed out a couple of months ago. This survey, once it's kind of doctored up and the thoughts of not so large, it'll be sent out to random individuals in the community to where they can assist us on what we need to possibly approve of, with law enforcement, and what they want to see policy changes and what our pros and negatives are. So that, I just want to kind of let you know that we send out by mail and we're going to probably do some on survey on people to get their responses. Thank you.
Next, we have Christian Ress, Washington Township trustee. We have the annual contract for 2025 fire service. Welcome back. So we have a really lengthy conversation with Board of Works. You all should have a copy of the contract. Two things, it does include some new language, which either you could explain. Chris is also the Washington Township trustee, purring as well. So whoever wants to lead all.
Well, and yeah, just to, just to inform you all as to procedurally where you are at, generally speaking, the Washington Township trustee's office contracts with the city for fire service protection for portions of the incorporated and unincorporated portions of Washington Township. That has always happened. It's, it's been a routine function for a while. In 2019, prior to the 2019 year, there was a expansion of the contract in terms of terms. It used to be about a page. At that time, I had not yet been attended by the city. I was only working for the township at that time. And I drafted a more expansive document, which is essentially what you're looking at now. That document was ultimately approved by the Board of Works. It was negotiated and Chris Tepe and I went back and forth on some language and it was ultimately approved by the Board of Works and it was signed and recorded in county level. Now this year's contract, because that contract does not include an automatic renewal provision, so every year has to be renegotiated. So this year's contract is what we were working through negotiations where the mayor and the trustee were both kind of meeting and talking, telling me what to write down and that's kind of what we got. So the majority of the contract is what it was in 2019. There are three new paragraphs that have some, some substance that are, there are substantive changes. Ultimately, you don't approve the contract. Ultimately, the Board of Works approves the contract. However, the portion that is set out in paragraph six and seven of the fire service contract is language that was, that was proposed by the bond council that the township has engaged, which subsequently is the same law from the you engage for the new bond council. So they suggested that in order to, for the township to be able to accomplish its intended goal, that language needed to be in the contract so that it met all of the necessary, the OGF requirements and that was something that can be utilized in securing the financing that the trustees were given. So the portion of the contract which you are really focused in at this body's level is six and seven. Paragraph six and seven, which is whether or not the city wants to agree to let the township impose a tax. It's not the city's tax, it's the township's tax and you are either agreeing to allow it to proceed or you are not. In terms of you are, by signing the contract, you are giving essentially tacit agreement to that, that form of financing should he, so choose to do it in order to prove him to do so. So that gives you the legal mechanism of where you are sitting current. Now I will let him do it. I just want you to know where you are leaving.
So essentially what you're looking at is we would be taking a six-year bond out on the fire trucks we're purchasing. The reason for doing that is essentially allowing the township to maintain some of its cash balance because going forward, we don't know exactly what's going to be happening, happening with the markets and things like that. For example, our interest that we're receiving currently, our investments has gone to, it's nothing. And the bond would allow us to keep that cash on hand and make the adjustments year over year so that we could look at, you know, could revisit this in 2022, 2023 and so on and determine if we're going to borrow the entire amount or if we're going to only borrow a smaller portion of that. So essentially what you would be granting is a flexibility.
Now on this bond.
Yes.
Is the city residents or is the township residents going to pay the tax?
Both. This is the entirety of the assessed value. The tax rate is. For the board, sorry. This is Matt Nunley, he's the bondor, he's part of my bond council for this.
So we looked at the numbers and currently over the six-year period, assuming the first year.
Could you speak in the live chat?
I can't. So for the, for the six-year period of the up to $2 million bond, and we expect that to be lower than the $2 million, the first year we pay out of existing cash balances of township. And then the five years, that would create essentially an impact on your tax levy equivalent of, after, for deduction, under deduction, it would be just under five cents for every hundred dollars a day. So just, it would be, it would fall just under five cents for every hundred dollars a day, or fifty, fifty dollars for a hundred thousand dollars. Assuming a hundred thousand dollar.
It would actually be a little bit less than that, probably closer to forty dollars because we're going to be using, we're using cash for responding, so we're not going to be borrowing that amount. And figures that we have right now for a $2 million bond, it's, that's just going to be advertised, it's going to be, will be accepted, will be closer to 1.2 to 1.3 of the bond. So that reduces the amount borrowed significantly.
Rick, I'm not a hundred percent sure I understood your question. So the, yeah, the tax is over anyone that is within the township of Washington Township?
Which includes the city, right?
Which includes the city, but also includes a significant portion of unincorporated.
Right.
Because otherwise you're, you're assessing the tax only on the unincorporated portions of Washington Township, but the trucks are in the incorporated portion of Washington Township.
But city already takes care of fire protection for the city. They really don't need Washington Township's trucks. So why should the city residents be paying extra for the township trucks?
That's an excellent question.
The township, the township provides the only tanker that the city has.
The city can be without the tanker.
Township provides the only brush truck that the city has and township provides plenty of.
I'm not going to argue that. I can't argue that.
Okay. So the, a lot of the equipment that is used in the city is currently been purchased by the township. The trucks that are used, things like that, the weather sirens, weather siren system, large portions of the city is protected by that. So this is a mutually beneficial thing for you. And usually, I said in last meeting, something like this, I'm talking to my bond council and the city's bond council, the same person, this is something that's usually on a consent agenda. This doesn't even usually warrant a whole discussion. So that's.
You guys were buying the weather sirens and like we paid that number plus about two years ago?
You have, we both have our own weather sirens.
Yeah, thank you. This is, this is to pay for what trucks?
This is to pay for the tanker that we're replacing that's from 1985 and pay for the rescue engine which sits in station two.
So you have the money to buy those trucks on, so we can go ahead and purchase them?
We do have money. The benefit is that it is, would save some of our cash on hand.
You know, we'd like to save property, but I guess that's, as far as tax, I'm, I'm in a, we're one of the highest taxed counties in the state of Michigan.
That's not accurate, but.
It is.
Okay.
That's what it means.
So what, again, like I said, we're asking you for a approval to just know that this is going on. We're not going to be probably using this for the full six years and we would be just helping us keep our investment dry, our cash dry, powder dry, I'm trying to say, for, for the time being as things even out in the market and adjust from COVID. In addition to also talking to your own financial planner today, again, this is a small amount.
Your one health, how about all the residents that are suffering too? This is just the more emphasis on that.
We pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to residents taxes, back to the, for township assistance. It's, yeah, it is. It's a bond, but it's a borrowing money at a very low rate from a local bank to help keep our powder dry for future uses, which would be going back to the city anyway. So.
I, I would note that the trustee's office pays a significant portion of their, their normal every year budget is, is in poor relief, that, that this would be eligible. The money would still be there to allow poor relief. If, if that's what your concern is, if your concern is you don't want to do a bond.
That's right. That's why we're paying for property taxes. Stayed acknowledged for a hundred thousand, forty dollars for a hundred thousand still increasing what people pay for property taxes.
That's, it, it's.
It's a really interesting conversation for the next couple of things on your agenda.
Yeah. Anyway, do you have any other questions?
Yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Ress? Mr. Smith?
Are you going to sunset the taxes?
Say what?
Are you going to sunset the taxes once the bonds are paid?
Yes, it's for equipment.
No.
Yeah.
Increase the taxes.
No, it's, we're borrowing for a bond, so it only goes against.
Yes. To answer your question, Jeff, paragraph seven allows for, allows for if, and I believe the way it's written, if, if the bond's paid off and once the bond's done, the tax, the tax goes away. It's, the taxes, the, the tax is only for the purposes of this bond. And that's why the, the language, I think it's either the end of six or the, or the beginning of seven is essential, if this is going to be for the purposes. And again, I think as, as Christian said, it's written such that every year they can reassess if, if the markets have changed and it makes more sense to pay on the bond than they're going to pay on the bond. What you're giving them, you, you are approving their ability to go get it if their, if their people say they want to do it. So if, if the, if the people that live in Washington Township don't have a problem with it, that's what you're saying. Which I would note to date, no one has shown up at any of the Washington Township trustee meetings or board meetings to voice opposition to proceeding.
But to be fair, we didn't advertise this as a potential tax increase either. So.
Well, I, I, because it's not your tax. So you're, you're fighting somebody else's about.
But we're giving the approval for them to approve the tax. It's, it's a step in the process and it's.
Sure.
So you're basically just, you can do it whether we say we're going to do it or not. You're just wanting our back? Is that, is that it?
I could do it on the unincorporated portions of the township. But what I'm asking for is to use the entirety of assessed value, which is inside the township. So that would be the city and the township.
In essence, what Rick was trying to say is if that happens and you live in the city, then you're paying for the city fire protection and you're paying for Washington Fire Township fire protection as well. I mean, and this additional.
That's, that's not a good way, that's not the correct way.
It is an additional, you're going to get, you're going to be penalized if they do that case.
No, that, that's not the right way of looking at it. The fire trucks that we have are covering and helping the city.
Absolutely.
I think that's a fair assessment.
I think absolutely. I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah. So we're providing you guys with brand new, state-of-the-art, amazing trucks, saving lives. And we're just asking if you can help, if we can, if we can put this levy, have the ability to put this levy on for a short period of time.
Anything else or entertain a motion to go forward, but no without the approval of the council? Is there a motion to approve what is presented to you as resolution?
I don't know about given it, not, just basically.
This resolution for the Washington Township's bonding ability to.
It'd be twenty-five with the resolution.
Twenty-five to go ask their order if they want to do. Not hearing a motion in that favor. I'm really down the parliamentary fold here, Chris.
We have to do something. You can't all just stare at each other. So either vote it up or vote it down. Do something.
The, I guess the other piece of this is the Board of Works did schedule, they tabled this, but scheduled a special meeting.
Yes.
To approve the contract.
Yeah. Either way, you have to have a contract because you're using somebody else's stuff to put out your fires. So whether it has this language in there or not, you still have to enter into a contract.
But we don't approve the contract.
Right. The Board of Works, that's, the Board of Works at their special meeting has tabled this so that they can have that, that discussion. The question before you is whether or not you agree to paragraphs six and seven in the fire service contract. If you do, so move. If you don't, so move.
Yes, I make the motion that articles six and seven be strictly from the contract.
The motion has been made by Jamie to remove six and seven related to the bond for the township trustees, fire services contractors to see, agrees for, or second?
Second.
Second, and made by Rick. All those in favor of this?
I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Okay, we'll go roll call vote. That's even, Jamie King going.
Boiada?
Yes.
Kevin? Rick? Daryl? Jamie?
The motion passes to strike number six and seven of the fire contract. We'll go back to Board of Works. If you still need it, have their special meeting. If you don't, please let us know. Go for tomorrow for the other task. Okay. Thank you. Up next, we have resolution 2020-20, this Greensburg Community School Corporations bond. They, and Superintendent Hunter is here. If you have any questions on that, I believe it was brief, seven, five. If you would like an opportunity to share what we're working on, let's just.
Over the last twenty years, we've had kind of a long-range plan where we have made sure any projects that we brought forward did not increase our tax rate. We've kind of maintained our school tax rate over that period of time. This bond is a replace a $4 million bond that's going off. So with the tax rates being where they are now, we will have a zero increase on tax rate, actually a slight decrease from this bond, $3.7 billion to our existing tax rate. It is to help us maintain our buildings. Most of it is going to go for infrastructure. Most of it is going to go for infrastructure, some of it for new equipment. I think I gave you a list of all the proposed projects that this would cover. So it's not to one specific building. It is to the overall school corporation. The reductions that we've had are capital projects. Some of the things that we used to be able to do in capital projects. Now, the only way that we can do it is through some type of bond. We will have in two more years, we'll have our $20 million bond being reduced from our elementary project that we had back in 2004. So we could see a significant decrease in our school tax rate. We're anticipating doing some additional work at that time too. But we're not really seeing any additional increase in Greensburg schools' tax rate over the next decade. So that was kind of our overall plan. And if you know our buildings, you know that they're all in really good shape. And we've been able to do that through staggering out projects from the elementary to junior high to high school. So I would ask the board tonight, the council tonight, to please approve that $3.7 million bond issue. Again, and no tax increase to our public.
Any questions? Any questions, Mr. Lieutenant Hunter? If not, we entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2020. Been by, by Ed, is there a second?